This conference will now be recorded.
September 27th, Kansas City Call to Order, would you please stand for the place of allegiance and moment of sun?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, in the regard of individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to consent or approval of the consent agenda items approved minutes from the September the 13th meeting and statement of bill paid in amount of three hundred ninety-two thousand three eighteen ninety-four.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve this consent agenda with the clerk please call roll.
Malot? Yes. Shriver?
Yes.
Stike?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is request or comments from the public. Bruce, podium here and state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Daniel Soptick, twenty-six, twenty-eight, South Fifty-first Terrace, KCK six-six-one-oh-six. I just wanted to take a few moments and introduce myself for those that don't know me. So I am a candidate for sheriff here in Wyandotte County. Obviously, it's election season and we're looking to do, we've done several meet and greets all over since we started this back, back in March or April. We're looking to do one here in Edwardsville as well, middle of next month. And so really, I just wanted you guys to put a name with a face for those that had never met me. I'm sure you've seen some signs out as we've gone through this process, but I've never got to come and address you guys. And so I wanted to introduce myself. And I don't think you guys do any questions at this point, but anytime you have any questions, you want to address anything with me, I'm more than welcome to take those questions on and have those conversations. I know I've had the opportunity to speak to a couple of your council members about a couple of things. And I love the interaction. I love the opportunity to tell people where I stand on, on the things that are important to you guys. I actually visited Edwardsville many times over the course of my, my life. My grandparents grew up here or they lived here as I grew up. It's a cool town. It's, it's just you guys have everything that I think a lot of people want in small town and it's, it's awesome. And so what I would tell you guys is I think you're doing a great job. Keep doing what you're doing, but please funnel those questions to me when I get the date. Looking at a Wednesday, early October, I'd love to put it out if there's any mechanisms for that, not for any endorsement, but just so the citizens of your city know the, the when and where. But thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening. My name is Nina Kimbrough and I am a resident at twenty-twenty-four South One Hundred and First Terrace in Edwardsville, Kansas. And I just came to address you this evening about Junius G. Groves and I am told that there will be some information given tonight. I am a member of the family. My mother, Mary Kimbrough, has greeted you on many occasions through the years about the African-American cemetery and about the Groves family. My name is Nina Groves and my grand, my grandmother was Nina, my name is Nina Kimbrough and my grandmother was Nina Groves. Junius G. Groves was recognized and inducted in the Kansas Business Hall of Fame just this past month. He was the historical inductee and Mr. Cliff Illidge of Cerner was the contemporary, contemporary inductee. And that was in Emporia, Kansas, and then they had a actual ceremony at the Black Archives in Kansas City, Missouri, where he was recognized and a plaque was given for them as well. He, of course, was a person that was in the book of Booker T. Washington called Negro in Business, was one of the exodusters from the South. He became known as the Potato King and our family is in full support of a proposal to recognize Junius G. Groves as that in numerous ways here in our city. We feel like that this is where he had numerous businesses, owned many, many acres of land and there's a lot of information that, that is about him. However, none of that has been recognized in the city where he did that, which is here in Edwardsville, Kansas. So we are in support of making sure that that proposal is going through. We want to do that in numerous ways, not just, you know, in a small way. We would like that to come in the future so that future generations will know about this person who actually is well-known around the world, actually, but not here in his own area. So we don't want anything as far as the family members or community that is anything fast-paced, but something that is possibly well-thought-out and a process that involves the family and the community. We make, we would like to make sure that this is not for any political gain, that it is for only reason is to give honor where honor is due. And so we just want to just to know, we grew up in this area. There's many, many family members who are still in the area and that we just do the right thing because it's the right thing. So I just appreciate your time tonight and appreciate being able to address you this evening.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, if not, the next item on the agenda will be here presentation regarding the progress of Ninety-Eighth Street reconstruction project. Would you be you, Randy?
Good evening, Randy Gordon, BHC Engineers. Glad to see you again. I actually want to start out with a very short video for kind of progress on One Hundred and Tenth and Riverview. This is time lapse shot from a webcam we've set up on site. So you want to start that, Zach? So this really encapsulates about the past five months activity out there since the contractor started wholeheartedly. And you know, the funny part, I look and I see some rainy days, which is kind of odd. I forgot all about those in these dry times. But nevertheless, just to let you know, construction on the One Hundred and Tenth Street part is progressing nicely. If you've driven up there in the last week, you're going to see curb poured. Now there's curb poured on both the inside of One Hundred and Tenth and the outside edge of One Hundred and Tenth. Concrete for the roundabouts in and now we have asphalt down. Now, it's not all the asphalt, but that's the base and will make it much easier for the contractor moving forward. Certainly to, to finish a lot of the work for One Hundred and Tenth. We're still waiting for BPU to finish relocating the water line on Riverview on either side of One Hundred and Tenth. Although, as, as I understand it, they are making progress. So right now, the contractor does, in fact, have a reasonable expectation of getting substantial completion for the roadway this year, which is what the contract was originally set up for. So that is certainly reassuring news, even though that sometimes we can always wonder a little bit about utilities on projects like this, but it'll also start making things easier for residents when we get in there and a little bit more of the temporary access for them. So with that, move on to the actual official agenda item Ninety-Eighth Street. So Ninety-Eighth Street, the city was awarded a combination of federal Surface Transportation Program monies through Mid-America Regional Council, as well as some supplementary funds through the CARES Act to fill out the city's original request for federal funding. So design is progressing with Ninety-Eighth Street and that is from Kansas Avenue at the south end, north to the North City Limits. Am I going off this quicker from here on out? Okay. All right, I guess the right direction. Again, just to recap for you, there's generally on the map showing the limits. This is going to be designed to what has become the city's standard collector street section. So that is eighty feet of right-of-way and then within that, a thirty-two back-to-back, thirty-two feet back-to-back. So those are fourteen-foot asphalt lanes with curb and gutter on each side. That is wide enough to meet share-the-road standards. So it's wide enough for bicyclists with motorists with room to pass. Also, a ten-foot multi-use path on one side of the street. In this case, we've got it programmed for the east side of the street. Also, the grading would be done on the west side of the street so that if they wanted to add sidewalk in sections in the future, the grading's done. It's just getting the contractor in to form up and pour new concrete on top of that. Design speed is forty miles an hour with the assumption it's going to be posted. This is a thirty-five mile an hour roadway. Any questions about the general kind of configuration of the roadway? I've, I've got some more information on some specific points of interest.
I've got a question. So on Ninety-Eighth Street, it's showing that it's just going under the on-ramp to I-70 when actually our city limits go to under I-70.
The city limits actually ends just north of the ramp from four thirty-five that goes northbound four thirty-five to eastbound I-70.
So north of the ramp is our city limit, not south of I-70?
Well, the answer to that is yes. And bear with me. I've got a, a figure in here that'll, I think, help you make sure you're, you're clear and everybody else too. So right now, the, the one thing, now that we're basically approaching field check stage, and that's KDOT's terminology, you guys have heard this before. Field check is the first step at which we put together preliminary plans. We put together a preliminary estimate that is based on actual survey data, property information. It's our first, our first, I think, fully informed opportunity to estimate costs, right-of-way needs, easements, things like that. So right now, based on preliminary design, so we're, we're about fifty percent of the way from starting to fully working out all the details. It's typically where we try to be at field check. So right now, the total project cost estimate, that's construction, that's design, that's what you have to pay utilities to move, that's inspection costs, that's right-of-way acquisition, right, is right now assumed to be about eight point eight million. Federal funding, four point eight million. That requires a twenty percent match on every federal dollar. In this instance, what you're currently showing is of the eight point eight million total, subtract out four point eight million of federal funds that are allocated and that's a four million dollar differential between the two of them right now. Now, one thing to let you know, this number is based on as current of information we can get cost-wise from KDOT since this will be let through the KDOT bidding process and prices are going up. Right? We all see that at what we spend our money on, but some of the bid prices through KDOT bidding in twenty-twenty-one have gone up significantly. We're seeing some prices that are several times what their five-year average is in twenty-twenty-one for some fundamental types of work. So we're concerned as to what kind of inflationary trend we may run into. As I'll mention later, this project is programmed for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, which starts in October of twenty-twenty-three, based on the federal fiscal year. That means you can let the project starting in October of twenty-twenty-three and then anytime up till September of twenty-twenty-four. So we are already looking at some choices I think you may have in terms of if cost becomes such that you need to make some adjustments. There's some things we can do in terms of the profile of the road that can still meet a thirty-five mile an hour posted speed limit. It's just not what we prefer, right? We prefer it's safe and smooth and, and wide open for everybody to see as we can get, but that's a hilly route. And so there are some choices we're going to have to make. And so one of the things that we want to try and get a, a sense from you is how sensitive you are to this, this number because going forward, if we're going to do some design changes, this is the least expensive time to do it. Let me finish going through some other things and then if you'd like to have a discussion about some of those choices, I'd be happy to have that now or after the meeting up to you. Just for reference, right, we're tying in at Ninety-Eighth, or excuse me, Kansas Avenue. Ninety-Eighth Street extends from the north side of Kansas Avenue and then heads towards the city limits. Right now, what we are showing is going ahead and putting a right turn lane so cars coming off four thirty-five can get out of the way of folks who want to head east towards One Hundred and Second, then eventually up to the commercial board or on Riverview. We would, we do show wide enough to have a left turn lane for southbound traffic that's coming down Ninety-Eighth Street, approaching Kansas Avenue to turn left to head towards the interchange. Again, that lets them get out of the way of folks who are heading south directly into town on Ninety-Eighth Street. Any questions about that?
How's that going to change the elevation of that when you're in the middle of Kansas Avenue and you're going to be heading north, you know, and it's kind of a pretty good little drop? What's, what's it going to do about elevation?
It won't be a big old drop anymore. One of the things that we really need to do to bring it up to standards is we're going to fill that low spot in a lot, by a lot, eight to ten feet. The good or bad news is we're going to have to dig enough off the next top of the hill. We're going to have the material to fill in the bottom of this hill, just north of Kansas Avenue. So at least we'll have a good place to put the dirt nearby.
So then is that left turn lane necessary? I mean, wouldn't that, could that lower the cost a little bit?
It would lower, we looked at those numbers. Mike already asked us that question. You're probably in the twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar range, forty thousand dollars total. It's fairly small. And if normally we would say, well, if you meet the feds to pay eighty cents on the dollar, great, but we also recognize that every dollar you save is a dollar. Right now, the city would, would reap the benefits of. So that is an option, but later on, if at some point traffic increases and you need to do the lane, you're going to spend more than coming back.
Next thing I was going to say, what's the projected traffic on that?
Yeah, I mean, today, certainly, no. You don't need it.
That is. We, we did just for, for reference of this tipper intersection and I asked Randy.
Were you talking to Mike? So we're on here. Right beside you.
So early, some of the early concept here was whether or not, why we were doing this, that there should also be, you know, left turn going northbound and anything on the southbound side of this too. And I think we, from just traffic flow and things, the thought was, no, we didn't need to do all that extra. It may be someday and there's enough right-of-way there for it, but felt like the cost wouldn't be there. I think, at least from our standpoint, the thought is if somebody is going to get off and come over here to Ninety-Eighth Street to say, go to State Avenue, right, they're going to get off, they're going to come, they're going to make a right turn, they're going to go, say, to State Avenue. And if they're coming south from State Avenue, they're likely not going to continue to go south down Ninety-Eighth Street. They're going to want to get back to the freeway. So as Randy looked and his team looked at this, this seemed to be the most appropriate, but, but also from a cost standpoint. So we, we did look at it was what if it was a more of a fully developed intersection is probably, I guess, the right word and didn't feel like we needed to have, you know, a left turn lane, a straight-through lane, a right turn lane, an opposite left. I mean, certainly could have been part of it and would make some sense, but just didn't feel like right now current traffic conditions and probably at least a reasonable future that that's probably going to be where the push is at. And we know at some point Ninety-Eighth Street to the south has to be upgraded too. And so that's probably a more appropriate time.
And just so you know, we're still, this is laid out with the assumption that Ninety-Eighth Street will still have the stop condition at the intersection. Kansas will continue to free-flow east and west. Any other questions about at least the south end? So this is the intersection at Riverview Avenue, T-intersection today. So what we've got there again is long-term looking at growth patterns and looking at getting funds that fit today and then also maybe fit a little bit longer down the road. That's the whole point here is adding a left turn lane for eastbound on Riverview to go north, which basically also allows for a free-flowing right turn lane for folks who want to go south down Ninety-Eighth Street. With this particular street, we are showing stubbing sidewalk to the west. If the thought is at some point, there's the bridge over four thirty-five is, is widened and, and it would certainly probably have pedestrian accommodation added at that point in the future. This would then tie into that.
Sidewalk on the south side of Riverview or north side?
Right now, we've got it shown on the north side.
And this is all included in the current estimate? How much is this section costing?
The section of the.
Tying into Riverview with a sidewalk and the turn lane?
Yeah, this one's probably in the fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range altogether. It's, again, it's, it's a question of balancing dollars spent today versus what it's going to cost to, to upgrade the equivalent in the future. This, this seemed like a, a pretty good kind of middle point between fully accommodating within what we have as our project limits and, and really just running the existing road into the edge of Ninety-Eighth Street.
And could you explain this sidewalk again? Because I don't necessarily see a purpose in that.
Well, the sidewalk in Riverview as it goes west from Ninety-Eighth, that's really just a starter stretch of sidewalk for the future. And it can be omitted from this project that, that's basically about seventy-five feet of sidewalk on the north side that we don't have to build as part of this project.
I think I'd prefer leaving that out. I don't see, unless Chuck's going to use it. I don't really see anybody taking advantage of it.
So, so. But I do have a question. So is it, is that sidewalk or the walking trail that is on the east side? Is that what we're seeing shaded in? Well, ours is gray. Is yours blue? Blue? Is that what that is? And then when it gets to the just north of Riverview on the east side, does it cross over? Is that what that's showing?
Yes. So what, what?
So the walking trail then turns into sidewalk?
On the east side is the ten-foot trail. There is a crosswalk, there's a ramp, right, to let people go to sidewalk if we're going to build it on Riverview. So what you're seeing are the ramps that they would then cross the pavement to get to the west side of Ninety-Eighth Street. If we're going to omit the sidewalk along Riverview, we, we don't have to do ramps there. At most, we might put a ramp on directly from the trail just to Ninety-Eighth Street's pavement in case somebody's in the street and the trail's there and they can get to the track.
I, I personally concur with Councilman Kayhar. I think we eliminate the sidewalks at this point. And then because we don't know if it really makes sense for it to be on the north side of Riverview or the south side of Riverview at this time.
I would, I would say if, if as long as it doesn't jeopardize the, the, the grant, it's, yeah, leave it out. Now, if it would jeopardize the grant, I guess, would the best thing to do is put it.
I, I don't believe.
Okay.
I don't believe any.
It sounded like it did not jeopardize.
For Riverview, no. The trail, right? The trail is what really
Yeah.
is probably what they're going to pay attention to.
Yeah.
And one other question we had, one other decision is whether we can stop the trail here and not build it all the way to the north end of the project. Because that's another one of the decisions, right? If cost really comes into play is go from Kansas Avenue and get to Riverview and stop somewhere between here and the North City Limits based on what kind of pricing we actually get as we get closer to construction. In which case you stop the trail wherever you're stopping everything else you're going on Ninety-Eighth Street.
I'll have another question regarding that when we get to that.
We'll get to that. Before we leave Riverview, just so you know, the plan is from where we would actually make improvements to Riverview near Ninety-Eighth, from there to the east end, the near end of the four thirty-five overpass, we would at least go mill and overlay the, that other four hundred feet of Riverview, just to freshen up the pavement, give it a little more substance, similar to what we did on Kansas Avenue when we went all the way over to Ninety-fourth Street. So here's the north end. So Councilmember, there's the city limits line between Edwardsville and KCK. You can see kind of angling on the left-hand side of the screen. That is the exit ramp. That's from northbound four thirty-five to eastbound I-70. And then to the right, off the edge of the page is actual mainline I-70. So that gives you a little bit zoomed-in view of where the city limits is. So we'll go past the on-ramp but stop short of seventy mainline. So what we're showing right now, the plans would be, we would improve the full road to this thirty-two foot back-to-back till we get to approximately a hundred feet south of the city limits. And there, we taper down to match the existing roadway by the time we got to KCK city limits.
And how wide is that section when it goes under the bridges? How wide is that? When you're, we're talking about tapering down, how much?
As it goes underneath I-70, I think it's more in the twenty-two to twenty-four foot of asphalt width. It's, it's not awful, but it's not quite. What's that?
Eight to ten feet?
Narrower? Probably four to six feet narrower? Maybe of actual asphalt. And there's no curb and gutter at present.
So our curb and gutter will just stop?
Yeah, as, as we show, we'll basically just top, stop our curb and gutter right at the full width. We, you want your collector that they can type into at some point in the future.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and put this question out there now because it was going to come up. So have we had any communications with the unified government in partnering up at the same time that we are doing this project? That we continue this to go, it makes sense for something to happen from our city limit to State Avenue? So have we talked about anything or, or moving forward, how would we look at that?
Okay, so we did, you know, even when we were applying for funding for this project, we talked to the unified government to see if they wanted to collaborate. Certainly, at least if they give a favorable recommendation for funding. And they kind of said, you know, go do whatever you want to do, but they were not going to be on the same priority schedule for Ninety-Eighth Street as Edwardsville is, which means they don't anticipate doing anything that they, that staff knew of anytime in the future, near future. So.
Pretty much the same response. It's kind of disappointing to think that we have a walking trail that at some point is just going to go and stop in a culvert or somewhere that there's, I mean, what, you just turn around and walk back? I mean, that's always an option, but.
And I think that goes then to the, to the question internally we've had relative to do you build? So when you get to Riverview there, right, you can, how far do you continue past? You take it all the way up to this point? Or do you even put curb and gutter on this section of the road? I mean, the, the road itself through there is, we'll say in good shape. I mean, it doesn't have curb and gutter, right? It, it grades off pretty much both sides. It's fairly, fairly wide. Twenty-eight, thirty feet, whatever it is, you know, if, if pricing cost becomes an issue, how far do we go past Riverview? Or do we taper it early? That, that's really, do we taper it earlier and do an overlay, you know, and give it the right ability? And so just do an, an overlay all the way to the city limits and not include the, you know, the pathway and the curbs. Obviously, some point you come back, if that project to the north happens, and then you got to put curbs and stuff in and, you know, on a, just a cost, you know, cost per foot, it costs a little bit. foot, it costs a little bit more to go put curbs in after you got the road in than, than put curbs in. But if, you know, if that's, if that's 12 months out, this makes sense. If that's five, six, eight years out, doesn't make sense. I don't think there's a clean easy. If it's, if it's 24 months or less, yes, 24 months or more, no. But it's, but that's what we've been having some struggles with relative to the cost of this section. It probably, it's a possibility that if we're trying to get this project back here the number we had, which just so you know, when we put this project out there, it was, I believe, 72, 73, 74, 75. You know, we're, give or take, we're a million plus difference from when we initially submitted the project.
How far is it from river, the corner of River View up to this city limit?
We'll put back my like shirt.
We're trying to save a million dollars.
There we go. We are at, oh, there we go.
You're at 250.
We're 12, about 1,200 feet, so just under a quarter of a mile.
Okay, and, and we're looking at about a mil, a mile, million a mile? Is that what we're looking at?
This project in total is just over one and a quarter miles. It's one, what, three miles, I think.
For the whole thing?
And we're, we're right now, construction-
So in proportion, we're probably looking at around a half mil, somewhere around in there?
Right now.
If we, if we got rid of the curb and gutter at River View and just overlaid north?
Yeah, if you, if that's what you've got in mind, probably at least half million less.
Let's see.
Maybe three quarters of a million less. Right now, these numbers are pushing $4 million a mile.
I want to make sure I'm being clear. You're saying mil, million or mil?
Million.
Million, okay. Because when you were saying mil, I'm thinking, wait a second.
Well, you're still in budget.
Yeah, half a, half a mil and gonna, wait a minute, this is not gonna, okay, million.
All right, got you. I just want to make sure that I'm following track of what you're saying, mil versus million. Got you.
Um, how, so the she, the street is typically is ride share width, 32 feet across. What's a typical street that you put in that's not ride share, just a regular street?
It'd probably be 28 feet back-to-back.
So four feet different?
12 foot, so it's an extra two feet on each side.
And if we did a regular, because we have a 10-foot multipurpose path that people can ride bikes on. So if we let the bicycles ride on the multipurpose trail and did the whole project at a regular street and not a ride share street, how much money would that save?
That is relatively low savings because most of our work goes into just preparing the full width, that much grading. So if we took four feet out, unfortunately, it doesn't save us a tremendous amount of money. It might 10, 10%, 5%, something like that because most everything else we still have to do.
So 10% would be about $400,000, $450,000?
Maybe and probably not even that much.
Not even that?
For the whole project.
Okay.
And-
No, go ahead.
We, from Mid-America Regional Council and KDOT's perspective, right, who are, who helped secure the funds and then now they're going to administer through construction. When it comes to bicycles, they don't see a 10-foot path as a primary bicycle facility anymore because the primary bicyclists ride on the roadway. They don't ride on side paths like this. The recreational user, the kids and the parents who occasionally bicycle may very well use the path.
And so when they're looking at that, they're not looking at taxpayers in Edwardsville and how many of us are actually riding bicycles at that level. They're just looking at the grant funding. Is that correct?
It has become a, essentially a requirement of any federal funding through Mid-America Regional Council. Their policy is they want new streets that can meet all those modes of users, right? Recognizing that today, they may not be here yet, but they also have a lot of locations where there are locations that do have users. They don't have facilities and they don't want to kind of perpetuate that investment without provision of meeting those needs too. It's a great debate. Those are great debates to have and Chuck gets to view them monthly.
I think, what, what I was going to say is so this street concept, curb to curb kind of is exactly what is Kansas Avenue. So, right, so from a, a standard, this is kind of the standard we've had. Now, the southern, just to give you an example, the southern portion of Edwardsville Drive, that is a 28-foot back of curb and section and wouldn't support bicyclists to, oh, this really is, I, I would say this is the standard. The next standard up is I think what we talked about where you go to, you know, you go as much as 40 feet and you put full bike lanes on both sides.
Right, but thinking ahead, when we go from Kansas Avenue south to K-32, we will be in people's living rooms if we do something like that. And so that's what I was just thinking of when we tie it in. It might make sense to do it that way, but if it is a grant requirement, then it doesn't make any sense.
Now, we did look at, so one of the things that, if you remember, when this started, that, that we did a study of 98th Street corridor from end to end, right? So from K-32, say ended, K-32 to the city limits. And we, and we went through there and they took a profile using the same 35, 40, you know, 40 mile an hour design, 35 posted speed and laid out all the right-of-ways in there. And actually, this still fits all the way down. And in some cases, we have, in many cases on the south end, we have more right-of-way already today that's already sitting right of way than will be through here. We, we now know we have 20 parcels through here that we'll have to negotiate right-of-ways on, which we will be coming to the next meeting relative to that, to that agreement that we use a third party to do it. But I mean, it's, it's funded. It's not an unfunded thing, but just for the approval process to keep the right of way. But, so I think, I think you should generally consider this 32-foot back of curb to be our standard for collector streets. The question is not every collector's street needs to have a 10-foot pathway. Those pathways may tie into other trail systems.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and you see this in other cities. So it, it could be through a park. It could be, you know, I want to get, you know, I mean, it could follow a portion of Bets Creek as an example. It could go through a neighborhood, you know, a new neighborhood built and they incorporate pathways through it. So they don't always have to be immediately along the street. It's just, right now, we, we don't have anything relative to Kansas City. This is the only real connection. I mean, 94th Street isn't really a connection point. And then you go to 110th Street and basically, you know, that's another area for our city if you're going to have people on trails. And if you think about long-term, right, you want to be able to get these trail systems connect, say, all the way to the Kansas River and then use the Kansas River to kind of go east and west. And I know that's a, that's a big vision that's decades and decades away, but these are kind of our two connection points right now from the north to the south.
Right.
98th, 110th Street, hence why-
So we're looking at, like, Councilman Adams, his suggestion saved us about half of what we need to shave off.
Good.
Um, where would you suggest finding the rest of it or, or other suggestions?
I mean, fundamentally, the, that is the easiest thing to change and it's, it's, the nice thing is it's feasible in that as we proceed through the design process and we get closer to when you're ready to bid it, we'll have a better idea. Our price is going to, where, where are they going to be? Right now, we're, our pricing is, is throwing it quite a bit of concern into the numbers, which means we're bumping the numbers up because, right, that's what we need to do for you to give you some warning and help you make decisions ahead of time, not at the last second. So that is easiest to do because someday we basically just take the last 27 sets, sheets of the set of plans. We pull them out and we just, you know, hey, build everything else, right? And then we just do a little tie-in north of River View. It lets everything else proceed on course. The rest of it are going to be much harder discussions. But as I mentioned, one of the other things that we're looking at doing, and again, let me, let me bounce some ideas. There are some standards by which we design streets for how sharp the crest of a hill is and how sharp the bottom of the hill is, right? Crests and sags. Right now, post the, this road for 35 miles an hour, but we design it so that it's good for a car traveling 40 miles an hour to have enough sight distance, right? The road isn't so sharp they can't see far enough in front of them to stop safely. We can sharpen everything up so that it's good for a 35 mile an hour, but we don't have as much of a cushion when we designed a 40 mile an hour. And it can let us cut down some of the earthwork. We don't like to do that, but we do that sometimes when we need to. That's another thing that we can do. But again, it's, it's a decision for you, dollars versus the level of improvement you want to bring. We would certainly prefer to design it just like we did Kansas Avenue and pretty much any other street like this, which is, we give you, we give the motorists a little bit of extra cushion when they drive 40 in a 35 mile an hour zone.
Well, they travel in a 30 mile an hour zone. Now they travel about 60, so-
Right.
Great to see what this is going to produce.
It's also, it's also the, your standard of liability force, right? What you post the road needs to be appropriate for what the road is. And we like to provide some cushion because we know people don't always make the best choices. And we also need to give them a little bit of extra room to recover when, you know, they didn't need for something wrong, but the deer ran out on the street and they need to swear. A bicyclist is right there and they need to get around. So I mean, that, that's the good side of it, but in this case, we can take some of that out and still meet the standard. It's just understanding that's the trade-off of, of kind of how big the magnitude of some of what we improve.
How much money is the savings in that?
Half a million right now.
So that would be the initial-
Number, and that's if, for instance, just north of Kansas Avenue, the big low spot, right? We can fill that in more so it, it's very smooth and it's very good for 40 miles an hour. But if we let it be just a little bit of a sharper dip, but not that, right, not that you're going to potter your car out or anything else, you know, we can save a fair amount of money and that triggers some more savings as we go up the hill and have to go over that one too. Because everything on this road, what we do here is tied to that one just because there's so much relief out there. So, and we'd be happy to sit down and talk to you. But I mean, I think that's some of what we could see. The bigger impact's going to be what are, what are construction bid prices going to be in two years.
So we've got some time to, we've got some time before we make concrete decisions or blacktop decisions or however you want to term it.
Both. The, the, the one thing I'll say on that from a schedule and a cost perspective from time, some things like if you decide you ultimately want to not do much north of River View, really, that's fine. You can decide that later on. We'll proceed and have design ready in case you do want to include it and the funds fit. Some of these other changes-
The elevation?
The, changing the profile, that's a decision. If, if we wait and we stay with our, our preferred normal approach and you decide you want to go back, then we have to go change everything we've done from today until you make that decision. And that has cost implications to your budget too. And that's, those are all your dollars too. There's no cost share on that. So we want to be, want to be sure to advise you about that, right, decision effect.
What's the life of a road like this with proper maintenance?
I mean, from an asphalt perspective with what Dusty's trying to put together in terms of your long-term pavement management plan, you know, if that gets off the ground and funded appropriately, then you're really just doing occasional milling overlays every decade and the road stays in good shape, right? You seal the cracks when they open up. You, you keep that in good shape. You fix potholes and then you freshen up the top couple inches and then you kind of reset back to start.
So are, are horizons 30, 40, 50 years down the road in the design of this road?
This, most likely what you're doing is, yeah, I mean, that'll handle a lot of development. This kind of road will take 15,000 to 20,000 cars a day, which, I don't know, I guess depends on how fast you're going to develop, what's going to happen along 98th Street, but it, you can go ways without having to change anything else here.
I think one of the other things, and I don't know if you want to put that next slide. So, I mean, it is a continual process that we've been, you know, that we're still in. So, I mean, I don't think we're asking you tonight, make decision A, B, C, and D. I think we want you to understand the, the decision process we're going through, right? So we'll have discussions about, well, what if, you know, we'll, we'll have, run some more numbers on this, if we did this versus this, this or this. So we, you know, again, when we do these projects, we know that that budget has some variability to it because it's early on. We, you know, we didn't, we haven't issued debt for this. So we, we're not in a box where we go, oh, I got to go issue some more debt for this extra 300,000. So we haven't done it. We have enough money and, and we schedule it this way, right, to do all of the engineering work and all of the right-of-way easement acquisition. So we're, we're good to get through all of that. So, you know, we can get this out till design and then issue debt and either use temporary notes like we've talked about, kind of construction load or permanent. And some of that gets determined really what the markets are doing, what the financial markets are doing, which one works. Sometimes you go one way, some the other. But the other thing that, that, and I've talked to Randy quite a bit about is we really want to have this project ready. So we're far ahead of where KDOT's scheduled because KDOT's saying, okay, we've given you a schedule. We need field check plans by, I think it's September of 2023 or something.
2022.
So, so there are a lot, you know, we're like, why would we wait a whole nother year, right? What that does for us in this whole schedule thing, this happens pretty often, right? So there, there are several things. One, a city can, what they call pre-fund a project. So our dollars aren't available till fiscal year 2023, but maybe the construction market is really good in 2022. Yes, we go out, we issue the debt, we fund the full, whatever it is, $8 million project. And then in the following fiscal year, the feds refund us the 4.8. That's called advanced funding. The other thing that happens, sometimes we get close to the end of these federal fiscal years and again, everything's on federal fiscal year, doesn't have anything to do with ours. And somebody had a project and for whatever reason, you know, they started doing right-of-way acquisition and found out there was some big issue and their projects held up. And they can't fund theirs until fiscal year 2023, but there are 22 projects and they say, hey, are there any projects out there that can take $22 instead of $23? Well, again, we can be in that driver's boat and say, yeah, we would like to do that. And again, the market's good or the market's not doing so good in 20, when I say market, the construction cost. But everybody's looking to 23 saying, you know, we expect these costs to start coming down at early 2023. We got our project ready and we somewhat sit on the sidelines and allows us to time the project back now. There's a lot of ifs, ifs in those statements. I understand it. But what it gives us is flexibility where oftentimes we're trying to meet a very, the state has a very specific schedule and most of the time, we're not ahead. Most projects aren't ahead. Partly it's because we already did preliminary, a lot of preliminary work and survey and geotech. So we had all that stuff in the, you know, already ready to go, which put us probably six to eight months ahead of where we would be had we not done some of those other investments. And so that gives us some flexibility and we don't have to make a decision, oh my God, what are we going to do tonight to cut, you know, half a million dollars out of this? But with that, you might just touch on the last stuff.
Yeah, so this is just the next steps, right? And this is pretty much the same for every KDOT administered construction project. So what we've done is, I call this pre-field check. So we've basically done pre, the field check leveled sign. We've given it to city staff. Gives them a chance to look at it. That's another advantage of working ahead because we can make sure city staff's good with whatever it is we turn into KDOT because the next stage is to go ahead and submit to KDOT the official field check set of plans. Then after that, they review them and we all meet out on site. We go tour the job. We discuss any- discuss any questions or concerns they have, then we, after that, we take their feedback and then we start working on final design plans. Along the way, at that point, right-of-way needs are finalized, city's clear to go start acquiring right-of-way eneasements. We also let the utilities know, hey, here's what we're doing, here's what you've got in the way, make your plans to start moving your stuff out of our way. Maybe BP you will get a little quicker this time.
Average.
I mean, it could happen.
Average, you might be at a loss.
Yeah, we'll see. Um, and then, again, as I mentioned, right now, KDOT has this on the schedule for their letting October of twenty twenty-three, which is the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, that month, so they have just the beginning of that year, but as Mike said, um, the project can be done well and ready for bidding well in advance of that, um, somewhat depending on how fast you want to move. Yeah, and that was it. Other than that, it's just any other questions or discussions you've got.
When's the date that you need to know any changes before you're redoing those plans that you had talked about earlier?
Um, the sooner the better, only because again, if, if we're proceeding with the original design criteria, right, the way we started out, the farther we get, then that's that many more steps we have to backtrack, and that has, that does have some cost implication. Um, we're doing fine design budget-wise and we generally can absorb a little bit of shifting and, you know, some swerving, but that, that may be too much and that may have some consequences. It won't, it's not as much as that might save you, but if you want to save river dollars, then you don't want to have to take any of those away for us to cover what we had to redo. So, um, I would say, um, ideally within the next month, and I, what, I didn't tell Mike, but I did tell the project manager, Dave, Dave Nolte is our project manager on this, he's been counseled previously with this, he was just unable to attend tonight, um, that I would like to include in the KDOT submittal or field check, which is this first submittal, alternatives based on some of these ways of tightening up some of the hills, um, not full design alternatives, but enough to get them to vet whether they would be willing to let the project proceed, and at that point, you would have, you, that would be your best last point to decide without any major cost implication for redesign.
I, I think Randy's on the right track, even though we didn't get a chance to talk about that, is, I mean, there are several of these that have cost implications, but they, but, you know, they have other implications, you know, that we want to make sure we think about, and again, it does have to go through KDOTs, it, and when we say field check with KDOT, I mean, it goes to twenty, ten, twenty different places, and more times than not, somebody doesn't go to the first meeting and then at the second one, then they have all these comments and we end up doing a little bit, they do a little bit of this redesign. So, uh, we're rarely actually probably farther along in what they're calling field check planes than we typically have. So, I, I think there's two or three areas that have been raised and we kind of need to look at what are those costs, what are those implications, and quite honestly, we know we're going to issue some debt to pay for this, right? Is, well, what if, you know, if we issue two million dollars of debt versus two and a half million dollars with the debt, let's say that's the difference, what's that real cost, what's that cost on an annual basis? Because some of those costs, whether you issue two million dollars for debt or two and a half million dollars worth of debt, some of the costs associated don't really change. I mean, we, we have bond counsel here tonight for another item, I see Tyler over there, you know, I mean, there's some of their expenses that, bond issues, a bond issue to a point, right? And it costs you this amount of money for legal services, or there's certain just preparation costs, bond ratings and all these things, it doesn't really matter what the dollar amount is. So, you know, sometimes you look at that and, okay, I'm going to issue another half a million dollars, but you got the project you wanted and the real cost isn't a half million, maybe it's three hundred and fifty thousand. We, we can, we'll be looking at all of that.
Thank you, Randy.
You have other questions?
The last comment that I have regarding it is, I, I understand that the unified government's not, uh, interested at this time in moving forward with the full road design to State Avenue, but I would like for us to maybe, uh, reach back out to them and see if they have any appetite at all for the trail to can, if we thought that we could maybe just partner up with them and get the trail to State Avenue. Then we have, now we have a little bit more of that connectability that gets us from the Legends area down into Edwardsville to four thirty-five, kind of, and then it kind of moves, starts moving that process down the way just a little bit.
Do we want that traffic, do we want people walking from State Avenue down Ninety-Eighth Street, though?
If, if everything, if we approve everything to River View and have a trail, I mean, from there north, that's, it's fairly doable, e, relative, relatively easy to do a trail from there north into KCK. That is probably the easiest stretch to do an awful lot of these improvements.
And I was just thinking about people that are walking, if they're getting on there, I, you know, you see play people on Kansas, excuse me, Kansas Avenue walking all the time, and, and if they're going to turn, may, that have a, a, a direction that they can go somewhere other than just get to the corner, turn around and spit, and come right back. And then also, people that are riding bikes that don't want to get on the road and ride the bikes, now you have a pretty good Kansas Avenue to State Avenue's, uh, two aisles, um, that's a pretty good bike ride, it'd wear me out, so I mean, you know, that'd be good distance, you know, just some connectability from.
Right, and that's, I mean, Ninety-Eighth Street is your surface connection for this. Every other street's a bridge over some interstate, so that's why this one was kind of important to make that connection. All right.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, make a motion, we recess into an executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for consultation with legal counsel for matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship returning at.
Bye.
I would make a motion for seven twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second to go into recess, um, executive session, uh, and return at seven twenty. I'm not going to repeat all the other part of the, of the motion, but anyway, but the clerk, please call roll.
Malot?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
Second.
Then a motion and a second to return to regular session with no action necessary. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reconsider resolution 2021 day 17, making certain findings and determinations as a need for quality housing in Edwardsville and the creation of a rural housing incentive district, RHID.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is somewhat of a follow-up to our last meeting where we went through what is a rural housing incentive district. Just to summarize it, it's basically an opportunity to denote an area within the city for future housing needs. And similar to a TIF, it creates a mechanism to help finance the public improvements within that district so housing can be constructed. The first stage of that is conducting a housing analysis, a needs analysis, and then follow that up with a resolution tonight on the findings. You, I believe, have my copy in front of me, but receive a copy of the housing analysis. Okay, that's okay. So you have the analysis, really the analysis is summarized within the resolution where there are basically four findings. Those findings basically say that there is a shortage of housing, of quality, quality housing, within various price ranges in the cities despite our efforts. As you know, we've attempted to track housing on a number of occasions, and we have not had a new subdivision effectively here in over 20 years. The last portion of Williamson Farm, I think, was in '06, but that was originally done in '94. And then the River Falls subdivision was done in 2000. So quite some time since we've had what we consider a traditional housing subdivision, haven't had any multifamily projects. The second finding is that we expect that problem to continue and to persist. Again, we don't have anything on our horizons that would suggest otherwise, and we know that we have quite a bit of pressure on housing, just in the whole market overall, but also, you know, we have over 4,000 people that come into our community every day, but we only have around 120 of those that actually live and work in the community. So we have an exodus of people that leave our community to work, and we have but far more come into our community. And so in order to capture that housing, you have to have places, places for people to stay. We think it will be a deterrent to future economic development. As we know, a lot of economic development is based on rooftops. So if you want restaurants, professional services, et cetera, and so forth, you, you need to have those types of housing to help support that in the future. I do have with me tonight Ross Vogel, Mr. Vogel here to my left in the green shirt is one of the developers. He is with Heartland Housing Partners. He intends, if this project is able to move forward, to partner with Alcoa Development. The broad intent is, at this point, is to look at owner-occupied townhomes within this roughly 10-acre site, which generally people would reference this as Highland Drive. So it's a 10-acre site that goes from Fourth Street back to 102nd Street, south of where the school was at, and slightly north of the area that is kind of the North Old Town across from the Methodist Church. I believe they have the property under contract at this point, obviously subject to, you know, other conditions as typical contracts. So again, tonight, the first step is to adopt this resolution and the housing needs analysis that then is sent to the Secretary of Commerce. If the Secretary of Commerce, their office approves these findings, your findings in the housing analysis, they will then notify us. That generally is 30 to 45 days, can be 60, so there's a period of time there. At that point, then we would come back with a second resolution calling a public hearing on a specific project, so officially creating the district and a specific project or projects at that point. And that is when we would get into discussions on development agreement, development plans, the specifics of the overall project. I think with that, I will ask Mr. Vogel maybe to make a quick, a couple of quick comments of yours. He, he has done a number of these. He might be able to give you a little more explanation if you don't mind briefly.
Good evening, Ross Vogel.
Please state your name and address.
Sure.
For the record, thank you.
Ross Vogel, 4851 Meadowbrook Parkway, Prairie Village, Kansas. Mr. Webb did a great job introducing RHID. It's a four-step process, three steps for you all to actually take a vote. One of these is tonight, which basically makes this land eligible. Appreciate Mr. Webb and his staff. We looked at options throughout the community as far as land goes, and you all have identified the cost of infrastructure. Throw in the fact that topo is a little bit different, difficult than your community. Throw in the fact of the, the facts of the economics. And then the biggest one is throwing the fact that, and I, I do a lot of this, I've done as many, done as many combined RHIDs as, as the rest of the state has done. Over the last six months, I've come to say this a lot because it's true. The competition no longer is to find people to buy the sticks in the air. Competition is to find people who will put the sticks in the air. And, and, and our, our company doesn't do that. Alcoa Development does not do that, but we are willing to develop in your community, but only if this incentive is in place. And that's simply economics as well. We did an analysis on the market, and with these townhomes, I feel that we need to be at $265,000 per side of the townhome and, and for us to, for that price point to be obtained, this is the mechanism to do so. Perhaps this mechanism's been around a long time, but your community wasn't eligible until just this past spring. So there was some legislation that was passed to make you, to make Wyandotte County everywhere outside of Kansas City and Wyandotte County, and then several of the communities, smaller communities in Johnson County, as well as Shawnee County and Sedgwick County eligible, which they weren't before because of population. So, and we do have a couple builders that are interested. We just have to get to that point.
Thank you.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Mr. Vogel can answer any questions. Again, I didn't want to belabor the process. We went through that in, in, you know, full detail. I think, again, this is the first step of a multi-step process, so this will be before you a number of times. Again, tonight, we're saying this subject property is the subject property. We want to create an RHID on others could be created in the future if that's the, the council, and we have a, a property owner and developers who wish to pursue that. Again, these findings, which I, I think are somewhat self-evident, but again, that had to be put in the form of a, of a housing needs analysis. Some of that came from some prior work that we had done. So, you know, there's the national trend, there's kind of the state trend, and then you see the, you know, down below that, kind of the local. If you approve, again, the resolution with the housing needs analysis, that will be published in the paper. The housing needs analysis will be available for public review, and all of that is sent to the Secretary of Commerce, and a member of their staff will review and then advise us.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt resolution 2021 17, a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the need for housing within the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, and setting forth the legal description of real property proposed to be designated as a rural housing incentive district within the city.
Second.
I have a couple of questions when it's appropriate.
It is now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I noticed in the housing study that it said the average lots that they were expecting were about 50,000 to 70,000, and in our newest subdivision, the most recent lots topped out in the upper 30s. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's being accounted for in our housing study based on what, what the expectation of what the sales price will be.
Yeah, I think the, when, when that, that mention there is, is if you look at, if you take that price of home, and I think in there it was using 250 to 350 for a single-family home, that generally your lot costs are going to be at around 20% of that. And then out of that, the developer anticipates about 50% of that is direct cost to them. So the lot cost, I don't know what the exact lot cost is on this particular item, but it is built into the program. But so it, it's somewhat numbered, so these lot costs may be a little bit less. But again, I think the intention here is these will be built and, and sold as an owner-occupied lot, not sell the lots to multiple builders to build on, but they will be built as units. I, I think generally is, they would be built out all to get, you know, relatively all together. I mean, they're not going to go build 27 buildings at the same time, but the intent is probably to have a single builder.
Right.
An agent that would, you know, as demand, just keep building on them.
Right. My concern, though, is just if they're basing their market value on potential lot pricing. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a different expectation set compared to actual comps in the community first. And then the other thing in the RHID verbiage, over and over, it said quality housing. We're looking for quality housing. And so I think that's why it's vital that we have included in there that they're not rental properties, but owner-occupied, whether it's an ADEED or an HOA. And I know this isn't development agreement time. However, I didn't want a miscommunication, at least on my part, you know, with the developer here, with what I think would be quality housing by the time we get down the road there. And I think to do that, we would look at setting up most of the homes in Wyandotte County that are townhomes or not single-family homes. If they're in that two, mid-200s price range, they all have pretty strong HOAs with maintenance provided on the exterior of the home. That would keep the value up for the time of the RHID until the property values are adjusted. And I think that would be something that we would really look at and, and look favorable on, is having an HOA where the exterior maintenance is provided. And a lot of those have lawn and snow as well, but the ones that I'm looking at cover the roof, a lot of times the siding. And then as we're looking at it, looking at off-street parking, because I believe that affects the value as well, and the ability for emergency vehicles to get through, is not having cars piled up on both sides of the road. Whereas when you have attached homes, that is a typical issue unless it's accounted for early on in the process. And so I just wanted to make, I didn't want to have this already in my mind, or, or, and I don't know if everyone on the council feels the same way, but not to say it upfront and then spring it on them later when we're on, down the road, if that's, if that makes sense. I just thought it'd be fair about it upfront. Yeah, and if, if.
Mr. Vogel.
Mr. Vogel had any thoughts or, or concerns on that?
I gather you have some experience in, in real estate.
A little bit.
Yeah. Lot price is tricky, right? That's part of the reason that, that in this market, we've got to look at attached. And a lot of markets are looking at that as well. I mean, your hard cost on your lot right now is 50,000 to $60,000. So if you, there's a, there's a small community south of here that I'm working on, in Miami County, I'm working on a project, we're going to have $80,000 lots, I'm just houses. It's just a difficult nut to crack. So just to be clear, we understand what that means, that, that if we didn't have the RHID, absolutely not, no interest whatsoever. So just to be clear. On the HOA issue, both developers have experience, but the developers have experience in this type of product. We have not gotten to the level of detail on what the HOA will look like. We do always want to be sensitive to, you know, it's taking a cake, right? And, and there's a lot of ingredients in that cake. We want, we want to be sensitive to long-term value, not only for the residents, but for the community. But we also want to be sensitive that it's a little difficult, and we want to watch people's bottom line, not today, because it could be, we hope it'll be quite a few years before those are needed. So I appreciate you bringing up. I think what I would say is, if it's a non-starter, I'm glad we know, we probably need to have that discussion a little more, because what we, the last thing we want to do is spend time and money on this project and energy and effort, and then that be an issue that we can't pass at the end, because there's just a lot of opportunity out there right now. Hope that's a fair answer. It's a straightforward answer as I can be.
Mike, would it be possible to share maybe some locales for, for this type of development? So we could see a sample or an example of the type of housing he's talking about?
Well, one I can, and it wasn't necessarily done under RHID, it was, the situation was different, but I, I know you all know Alcoa Development, Dustin Baker. He did a project over in DeSoto. It's a road over from Kill Creek, it, just to the, it's one, basically one street to the east of Kill Creek Parkway. I have a little knowledge of that from my way, way back when I was their interim city manager in DeSoto, but, you know, it was a project that started off, it went belly up. There was some, I think, more like quadplexes or some other kind of rental housing in the middle of it. But then a single-family developer came in there, was able to acquire the property. I think they probably got it, you know, kind of got the property at very low cost. But partly what Alcoa Development did is they built, I think they're sort of around, there's three cul-de-sacs or four cul-de-sacs. Each one of them has probably five units in there, these owner-occupied units. That's the quality that, that they're looking at.
That's exactly the project. It's 2020 structure. I wasn't involved, but it's seven, one individual, a builder that's, that basically sort of along with Alcoa Development. And these were trying to build a similar to that here. We have.
What, one of the things I would note, the word quality, because the, the Secretary of Commerce kind of has a little bit of a check sheet of some of the things that they look at. So one of the things they look at, and probably a lot of cities don't meet it, is if, you know, there's a whole lot of structures without bathroom facilities or, you know, adequate water supply, that's not us, right? But, but they do look at things such as age of housing. And so our average, if you take our single-family detached homes, on average, right, the average was built in 1975, so 46 years of age. 35% of our housing is more than 50 years of age. Those kind of things is when they talk about quality housing. Now, you could have a 50-year-old home, that's, that's very nice. Those are some of the, the demographics they look at. You know, 62% of our houses, single-family detached houses in Edwardsville are 200,000 or less on the price point. So if you're talking about being able to bring in this kind of product in excess, that's appraised value.
Are you counting the mobile home parks in those single families? Okay.
No. So now, I understand appraised value at the appraisal district and selling price are not the same, as I know all of you all know. I, I'm just saying that the project would bring in a level of housing price points that we don't really have in this community right now. It probably pushes our average price points up from, from a value. So that, that's some of the things that, when they talk about quality housing, and we talked about it, right? I mean, we can't say, I mean, you know, there's places where they have a large portion of their cities that, that, you know, they have, you know, problems like that. You know, one of ours is about 50, only about 50% of our community, our single-family detached homes are connected to a sanitary sewer, right? We, we use a lot of septic systems here, right? And again, those are, that, you know, they would prefer to see, and I would tell you, probably Department of Health and Environment would love to see every house on a sanitary sewer system. It's just obviously too expensive and doesn't work and everything. But those are the kind of demographics that they look at. So I think relative to our demographics that we're providing in our report, that, that they will look at that and say, yes, there's a need for quality housing. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have poor quality housing, right? I, I think generally that's not, not the case. We have older housing, and I think we know that, but the vast majority of it is well, well-kept, quality.
Mike, you kept referring to in your comments about the, the ordinance or resolution alluding to the, the, the report.
Right.
The housing report. Does that need to be in the motion?
It's, it is included in the motion under section one.
Okay.
And, and so that.
He did not mention it when he made the motion, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it is part, it is part of the resolution.
Okay, very good.
And that will be sent along with, to the secretary.
If there are no further questions, would the clerk please call roll?
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Your, your comment time. If you have any. I think you, a couple of things. Oh, yes, sir. Oh, wait. Just a couple of quick things that, and one of these is, we are going through a change in our payroll system, so you all will see that. Make sure we get you connected to it so you can get pay stubs. You all don't have, you don't have to clock in and out on a clock, so, but we'll make sure you have the connection, so if you want to pull up, you know, your pay stubs or getting those kind of things. We really made a transition, I think it was a good transition two years ago. We went from a pure pen and paper and a lot of data entry. We went kind of called pay for, and really just that the quality of follow-up service just continued to be a problem. We just couldn't get follow-up. So we went back out for proposals. I think based on what we've seen so far, pay comms is going to be a superior product for us, and doing all the things we, we need to do. So your checks might look a little different, or your, your pay stubs will look, you know, your direct deposit may say pay comms and pay for, just so you're aware of that. Just for reference, I will be out of office from the October 2nd through the 6th, and that's a Saturday through a Wednesday. I will be attending the ICMA conference in Portland, Oregon, this year. Zach has decided to stay here or hit it, or his conflicts. There are a lot of things that happen at the same time, so typically we go to that. But I will be attending it this year. Other than that, Mayor, unless there's, I think you saw the report on 110th Street, that's kind of neat. There's, we've got drone videos of it, staff's done some, I think the public's done some, DHC's done some. It's interesting now that we have some of these tools available.
Thank you, Mayor.
There's any that you want to see, let us know.
Okay. Zach, have you got anything to add? Okay, thank you.
I, if I might.
Go ahead.
While the turnout wasn't as good as we would have liked for our Autumn Fest, Zach and Mike Martin did an extraordinary job, and they were there the whole time. I'd be willing to say thank you to Zach and all that. That's a lot of work, and, and we need to find ways to make that a little bit better and give him a lot more support in the process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chuck, we're going to start with you.
Well, I want to discuss here shortly how, or quickly, how we go about addressing Ms. Naina Kimbrough's request in the honoring of Junius Groves. And I, one of the things that was discussed in a meeting that I had earlier that, last week, was that we start with some signage. And if you guys are aware of the signage that was placed at 98th and State Avenue for when Sergeant Rick Aston was killed on the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, it's a brown sign that goes on top of the existing road. It does not change the name at this point of 98th Street. It would merely signify and recognize the area of Junius Groves. And I think that it is a long time coming that we have done, that we recognize him and honor him in the family. And I would like two signs, one at 98th and K32, and one at 98th and Swartz. And during, and I know that this may not completely encompass the geographical area that we, that, that may have been owned by the Groves family, but it seems like it didn't reach, that's the next cross street to the north. I don't know if it reached all the way to, the next cross street would be Kansas Avenue. But we'll start with 98th and Swartz and 98th and K32. And I would like to start by tonight asking, do, if, if it's a motion, or do I need to request, or how the city can start that process in getting signage designed and installed?
I get it. I mean, on that.
Yeah.
We have a sign coming. We work a couple of different sign companies.
I was, I was just going to ask for consensus from the rest of the council, you know, and so you don't have to vote on it, just give a consensus. If there are any objections, speak, speak up. If there are no objections, we'll take that as an agreement.
I really appreciate Mr. Stites' energy and enthusiasm, passion in this, and I think it's a much larger project than just a couple signs. And so this is a gentleman and his family that are very significant to our area from a historical standpoint, and I, I think I would prefer to have a committee assembled of some significant Wyandotte Countyans, such as the Historical Society, the NAACP, council representation, a staff representation, and maybe some other, some other people that would have vested interest, the Groves family, in this, and really look at it as a long-term project and something that, that, you know, maybe, I think we have a, we need to have a strategy. I think Mr. Groves was the ultimate strategist on, with his success in farming and his other businesses. But I would like to, I would prefer, as opposed to just a couple signs right now, I'd prefer the, a more meaningful move that would be setting up a, a notable group of people that can really look at 90 days from now, six months from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, how we, we honor the entire agricultural community in Edwardsville that we have such a rich heritage with.
In no way, shape, or form was I indicating that I wanted this to stop at two signs.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, if I could just add a couple of quick notes. So we have been in contact, I have been in contact with some members of the Wyandotte County Historical Society who have kind of floated different ideas of maybe an Edwardsville subcommittee of the Historical Society, which in kind of the conversations I've had, might be couched as a subcommittee of our Cemetery and Parks Board, Cemetery and Parks and Public Spaces Board, because those, those would end up being, you know, public spaces, whatever the, the monuments or, or different sites that we would end up, you know, looking at for development for these kind of purposes would be public spaces. So we're kind of in the early stages of that, kind of in the same realm as far as recognizing history in Edwardsville. During Autumn Fest, originally the Wyandotte County Historical Society was going to have a booth handing out some, the No Small Potatoes children's book, which is about Junius Groves. They ended up not being able to make it, so the NAACP actually had a booth as well, and they, they handed them out. We handed out about 50 copies of that. We handed out about fifty copies of that to, to area kids who were at the event. Again, starting to, you know, I agree with Councilmember Stites and the Councilmember Adams' point of view that, that this is kind of a long time coming and, and, you know, shifting the, the focus on, you know, some of our history and highlighting it a little bit more appropriately. On our Riverview, or Riverfront Park Development Project, we're still very early in the conceptualization of that. But something that's been communicated to our consulting partners over at Stan Tech is to highlight the history of the area with signage and monuments, specifically about the Groves family, because the Riverfront Park area was owned by the Groves and was, and was used for farming and agriculture purposes. Similarly, the Cemetery, Parks and Public Spaces Board have really ramped up the restoration project for the historic cemetery, and they'll have some, some updates at their October meetings related to that, which is, it's, well, not strictly related to the Groves family. It does highlight a, a, a part of the history in this part of Wyandotte County and the state, you know, around the African-American community that, that we're going to try and make through that committee and through those efforts, a little bit more front-facing so that they're, you know, they're actually memorialized in an appropriate way. So, all that, just to give a little context of some other stuff that we've got going behind the scenes in the same area.
Sounds to me like you've got it under control, Zach.
Well, we could use all the help and assistance that the, and the Councilmember Adams' point of view. As we start getting closer to putting those together, it'll definitely be a broad effort to bring in as many voices to the table as appropriate.
Very good, thank you very much.
Appropriately.
I didn't mean to imply that I was against signs, I just think it needs to be a larger block project.
Thank you. Chuck, are you done? Okay, Margaret?
I will concur with all the comments, and I appreciate you coming. And I will say it is, it is eye-opening how many people don't realize this history, this information. I love the idea of the committee, I love the idea of the signs. Just sitting here had an idea, I don't know how this would happen or could happen, but have our Edwardsville grade school, that book, whatever grade it is, that teacher go over that book with the kids every year. Part of the curriculum, I don't know how that happens, but why wouldn't that happen in the grade school level?
I think there has been, I will-
I don't know if there is.
I'm going only from the meeting we had with Nina Kimbrough, Mary Kimbrough, and Leah, and Jared. And one of the comments that Ms. Kimbrough and Mary Kimbrough made was her time in the schools, not necessarily from that specific book.
Right.
But, but teaching in the schools.
Right.
So, I think, I can't tell you, I don't go to school that taught a year of, but-
Just an idea, right. Absolutely, very rich history. I'd like to thank Dan Soptic for coming, introducing himself, it's very nice to see a name and come out to our community, pay us a visit. I'm sure people have a lot of stuff to do on a Monday evening, so appreciate him stopping by. I did have one question on the statement of bills, I didn't bring them with me, so I have to help me out. And it's about the Fire Department EMS, there's a, like a fifty-seven thousand dollar different, what is that again, remind me?
Well, it was an error we, we were, so the payment for our fire department ambulance got charged into the general fund instead of the special sales tax fund, and we corrected that, but-
So it showed up on both of them?
It shouldn't show, it won't be in the general fund, so it's been corrected. It got charged to the line item in the general fund, it's in the same line item in the special sales tax.
Okay.
So, we caught that and it never gone out, I was going to say something earlier, moving along, so.
Appreciate that. I will, right. Zach and Mike and all else who probably had a hand in it, I'm Dusty, whoever, Fire Department, Police Department, any staff member that did have a part in the Autumn Fest, it was, I was down there for a while, I think I saw Carolyn or maybe Miss Carolyn, I don't know who else. It was a hot day, but it looked like a great crowd, I think Zach said the Friday night, that Journey Pro Wrestling. What the heck, there was over four hundred people down there, who knew that was a big pull, that people enjoyed it, really enjoyed it.
I believe they were.
Seventeen hundred?
Yeah, for Wyandotte County.
Correct. But there is a lot of work, Zach and I, when we talked, he had been there, I don't know how, six in the morning, and it was four or five in the afternoon, he said he was about halfway through with his day, so, among other people. So, thank you for all those efforts, I think anybody that was there had a great time, and we didn't have any rain.
And I even came in.
See?
The jeans have been broken.
Right, right.
Chief Coon?
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Jared, your turn.
I don't think I can beat what's already been said up here, but the recognition of the Groves family is probably well overdue. And I agree with both the Chucks on that issue. I was quite wondering on the, what the council thinks, do you think maybe we should have a, maybe a work session on that Ninety-Eighth Street? Rather than trying to hash that out during a meeting, that's just, I, I think maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a little work session on it. If we're wanting to cut some funds off of that and maybe cuddle, not cut corners.
Something like that needs to be done in a work session instead of hashed out during council.
I just don't think that we can really approach that very efficiently sitting up here. I think we need to be sitting around a table talking about that, so, that's just my idea, maybe before a meeting or on a date sometime.
Do a follow-up with you on that.
Yeah, I really think that we need to do that, because it's a considerable amount of money, and it needs to be done right, you know, so we can, you know, you can see that tying into over on Hundred and Tenth Street, I mean, and everything needs to kind of put together, be put together on that. Zach, Mike, all of you on the Autumn Fest, it's great, I would love to see Journey Pro Wrestling back. Enjoyed the, enjoyed the heck out of that, so I might even put some money in the tin next time. And I'm good to see the, glad to see the work being done on the railroad crossings, so, thank you, that's all I've got.
Carolyn, your turn.
I'm excited to see what happens with honoring the Groves family in Junius Groves. I remember my grandma telling me stories about the Potato King when I was little. And so just the, the great history that we have here is really important to recognize, and I'm excited to see what comes out of that. The books, I thought, were great at Autumn Fest and getting that started and getting it kicked off. And so I was excited to see us doing that, but I'm glad to see where that's going. With Autumn Fest, I wanted to just publicly thank Fastenal again. I see that we are hopefully going to be working between the Police Department and Fastenal to have a community event. If a grant gets approved, Chief, is that correct?
They're saying to us, we had to tell them what the project was going to be and money was somewhere. They made our proposal and, and we're also looking at opportunities to get some matching funds. That type of program is a little expensive, so we're trying to figure out how many, get as many as we can.
I think that's great, and, and again, I don't know if we have an opportunity to thank our corporate sponsors and the businesses that came out to Autumn Fest, maybe we can thank them publicly on Facebook, I think that would go a long way. Because other than Fastenal, I know BHC, and we even had some community businesses that were supportive. And so I'd love to see a public thank you for that. And for our Fire Department or Police Department, I saw those guys there working and Zach and our city staff. It seemed like everybody was happy to be there, and it goes along with our community. I just think we have the best people. Zach, did you want to mention the photo contest?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So we started this last year, it's kind of a way to expand, some creative ways to expand park programming, since we couldn't do some of our traditional park programming, but people seem to like it, so we're going to do it again. And it's our live-in EDW photo contest, so it's essentially just encouraging people to take pictures, or if they've got pictures of, of, you know, stuff happening inside of Edwardville on their property, or just, you know, whatever within the city limits, send it to, send it to my email address, zdaniel@edwardvilleks.org. Depending on how many photos we get in, we'll have some kind of mechanism to win it, what down to one winner, and that winner will get a free month's worth of trash service, and then will be the cover photo for our FY twenty twenty-two budget. Last year, the winner was Amanda Stewart, the shot on Fourth Street of the cafe in the post office. So I'm already starting to get some in, so yeah, as much as you can spread the word about that, it's always fun to see what people send in. It's easy, it's nice having a nice bank of photographs to use for this and that as well, that I don't have to go and take. So, yeah, I'm excited about it, thanks for reminding me.
And while you're up there, I had someone ask me if we're having a trunk-or-treat this year for Halloween?
We're not, we're not going to do a trunk-or-treat, we stopped doing that last year. What we're probably going to, we're going to have a continuation of the Spooky Express that we started last year. We're actually having a meeting between myself and the Public Safety Departments and the Parks Direct Supervisor to go over all the ins and outs of that. Part of that will include a new addition of that, is a ATV or UTV, kind of decorate your, your, your four-wheeler, kind of part of the parade. We started, you know, we put the dates out for that, after the meeting tomorrow, we'll have some more finalized. So here's how you make application, here's the route, here's what it's going to be, and, and firm up on, on, on those details. So, no trunk-or-treat, we went away from that because, A, there's just a lot of trunk-or-treats that happen in the region, and they all kind of stack up on each other, and it's hard to carve out a weekend that's just for us, for that kind of thing. And the, the Spooky Express we did last year was another one of those kind of COVID pivots that ended up being kind of more popular in some of our standing programs, so.
Okay, I remember the trunk-or-treat, it seems like we had hundreds and hundreds showing up, so I feel like it was pretty popular.
We, it was popular, part of the observation that we would get from like our Parks Department is that people, they weren't necessarily Edwardsville community members. They were people hitting all of the trunk-or-treats that day. So if there's one in Shawnee, they're going to go in the morning, and then, oh, then we'll go to the Edwardville one, and then we'll go to the Bonner Springs one, and so, yeah, there'll be, you know, five hundred people there, and maybe twenty-five percent of them are actually people who have been in our programming before. Not to say that we don't, you know, we want to be welcoming, but our Parks Rec programming should be geared towards the, our, our-
And one more thing while you're up there, someone asked about the large item pickup, do we have a date set for that?
I should have a date announced at the end of this week, I've touched base with Casey Disposal about it, and with Autumn Fest in the rearview now, we can kind of focus more on some of these other dates. But early November is probably, that first weekend of November is when we had it last year, and we'll probably have it again this year. Plan on that.
And the last thing I wanted to mention, it looks like the Hundred and Second Street full-depth repairs are going to happen next month, is that right, Dusty?
In the next couple weeks, we should be talking.
Okay.
Hopefully we start it by the next meeting, and get some heavy interest.
Okay, sounds good, I know a lot of people are really excited about it, so.
Yeah, we're coming up, the season, we know, they know that, through the concept of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Kimbrough, thank you for coming this evening, we look forward to working with you and Mr. Stites and, and other people in the community and, and people that can really help make this a great short-term and long-term strategy for giving it the honor, giving the whole community, including Mr. Groves, the honor that it deserves. This is a special place on the planet for potatoes, that's for darn sure, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it. When you drive down K thirty-two, the median is hideous. And it's a reflection on our community, and so I wonder if there's some way we can help KDOT with, because I noticed that they're doing about two mowings a year, and, and the grass in the cracks and the concrete's taller than the, than the rest of the grass. So, as, I think one of the beautiful things about going up and down Shawnee Mission Parkway is how well it's taken care of, and I guarantee it's not the state doing it. And so if we could do something like that, or kind of look towards that for the future, to be able to do that, to improve our, our welcomeness, if that's a word, and, and beauty and pride in our, in our city, because it's pretty bad.
Well, at ten-thirty tomorrow morning, we'll be standing on the median at K thirty-two and Ninety-Fourth Street with the KDOT officials.
Excellent, you read my mind.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
That'd really be fantastic for our community, help build pride and-
We've, we've had numerous discussions, part of the problem has been, I swear, every time I get to know who the area engineer is, it's a new area engineer or metro, it just changes, but, but yeah, so, it's something, they did some spraying, but, you know, it's not just spraying, it needs to be cleaned out, it's going to, it's going to take some labor, and it's probably going to have to be done in some sections, but we literally have a meeting, ten-thirty tomorrow morning, Ninety-Fourth, K thirty-two, to start there.
Must be kismet.
Yeah.
Okay, I really don't have a whole lot to offer, other than, once again, to give Zach and Mike Martin a huge thank you for all your hard work, it was really, I was there in the morning and then came back in the evening, but I remember Zach saying, well, I've got eleven hours left, and I said, what? And that was in the middle of the morning, so, anyway, and I know he, he works very, very hard, and we do immensely appreciate that, Zach. With that, we are adjourned.